Well, welcome, everybody. It's great to have the ACHD Commission and team members here with us today at City Hall. We've got Councilmember Willetts online, just there she is on the screen. And for our purposes, we need to, I need to ask the clerk to call the roll. Corliss.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Morales. Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
All right, and then on, on our side, we'll just call the meeting to order.
So efficient. All right. The first, the first item we have is a review of the State Street corridor planning and an opportunity we have for a Raze grant. But before, I'm not sure, I thought I, oh, right there. I'm sorry, Stephen. I thought I saw you. Before I call you up, I just actually am going to take a moment of personal privilege and thank Jim Hansen for your service. This is the last meeting, the joint meeting that we'll have with Commissioner Hansen. And really appreciate all that you've done over the years and you will be missed, your replacement. I think I also saw in the audience Trish Nelson, but it's, it's great to have you all back in these chambers. And Commissioner Hansen, to welcome you once more to City Council chambers for a joint meeting.
Madam Mayor. I didn't know that we were going to have an opportunity to say nice things about.
Well, I didn't open it to the full, to the rest of you, Jimmy.
But now I feel like I have to say something. Yeah, I will second that gratitude. Jim's been a mentor to me long before I was on City Council. And I think a mentor to a lot of people who've been involved in all things transportation and really just community building. So I'm excited to get to join this last meeting with you, very thankful for all the advice and mentorship you've given over the years. So thank you, Jim.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'll be quick. As long as Jim's still at the Flying M on, was it Fridays? Fridays, I'm not, I'm not worried about you going anywhere. So we'll still be there getting advice from you from time to time.
I may be showing up here, I will be showing up here to various hearings and so forth in the future, but wearing a different hat. So I'm young and there's lots of activities that are yet to be done. A lot of organizing activities, as you know from my previous life.
Well, thank you. Stephen, you like, from VRT, would you like to join us now?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Stephen Hunt, Chief Development Officer at Valley Regional Transit. I'm here with Kate Dahl, who's our principal planner. And we will be presenting on State Street and a planning grant opportunity. As, as I just mentioned, topic is State Street. We're looking at doing a federal funding opportunities. The most recent one, or the next one that's available to us is a Raze grant planning, is a Raze planning grant. Just to provide a little bit of background. Over the last decade plus, the activities along State Street have been guided by the State Street Transit and Traffic Operations Plan, the TTOP. And over the years, we've rebuilt, when I say we, I talk about all of us in the region. The, the ma, most of the major intersections along State Street have been rebuilt. And there has been redevelopment along the corridor that's been happening according to the transportation. Sorry, the Transit Oriented Development Plan. We've stood up a, a, an urban renewal district with CCDC along the corridor. And transit amenities are underway at several locations along the corridor. We've improved transit service levels, all again within the, the vision originally laid out in the 2011 TTOP. There are a couple of things that are outstanding, most notably the interstitial, the in-between segments of State Street. In between those improved intersections are not yet designed and most are not. Most don't have a, aren't programmed for design as yet. Construction funding is also unprogrammed on most of those interstitial segments. And that leaves the non-motorized and transit amenities on those segments kind of in limbo. So what we have been doing with the, meeting with the State Street Executive Team, which is agency staff representation and the leadership team, which is made up of agency electeds. We discussed the current conditions and future plans. And together, we've agreed that it would be worthwhile to pursue a funding for corridor design, for the entire corridor. And preparing the corridor with design documents that would facilitate coordinated and seamless infrastructure, whether that be constructed all at once or in phases by a single agency or by multiple agencies. The design would look at the elements that are listed here in terms of, again, being guided by the, by the TTOP and the ultimate build-out. We also, another outcome of the State Street Executive and Leadership Teams was a proposed project extent. We would like the design project to go from Old Highway 55 to 18th Street. That would cover most of the, most of the important undesigned sections. It was also acknowledged that the corridor changes significantly west of Glenwood. And not just in character, but also in jurisdiction and in terms of planning projects, et cetera. And so it may mean that we need to adjust the scope of the design activities on that western end accordingly. This, so we would work with our agency partners as we're, as we're putting together this design project in order to make sure that the grant scope was successful. And that it would be, at the end of it, meet all of the different needs of our, of our funding partners. Not our funding partners, but of the partners in the region, whether that be ITD, ACHD, or the various cities. So on the, on the west end, looking at it going to Old Highway 55, on the east end going as far as 18th. The section between Whitewater and 18th has various cross-sections. They're not, it's not consistent on that section in terms of the number of lanes. And so we would be looking, and there isn't a full build-out design for that section. So we would be looking to establish a, a design for that between State and 18th through Old Highway 55. Again, kind of in the center of this, it would provide an opportunity, another opportunity to revisit the State and Glenwood intersection, which we know is, is a complicated intersection that has had a lot of effort put into it so far. And, but we're still a little bit in limbo as to where we're headed there. And so this would provide an opportunity to bring some resources and some attention back to that intersection. And with the opportunity to make sure that we improve the pedestrian and bicycle connections through and to that intersection. It would also design, it'd also tie together the, the designs that are being developed at State and Bogart and the multi-use path between Bogart and Glenwood, where there's development activities that are currently occurring. Also between Bogart and Old Highway 55, where, again, development is filling in there as well.
Stephen, before you go on, I just want to just kind of highlight something that you have in this picture. So, and you've, you've illustrated it, but I just want to make it really clear that folks want to tune online and, and some of our newer council members as well. ACHD manages and operates the portion of State Street that is east of Gary. So it's not super clear with the boxes down below, Gary and Glenwood. And then, like Stephen was saying, everything west of Gary would be ITD. So as you can probably imagine, the development patterns are vastly different. The driving behaviors are also pretty different as well, the further west you go. And so that's why it'll be really important for that cross-agency collaboration, making sure that things are consistent throughout, as much as possible, consistent throughout the corridor, despite different transportation jurisdictions. Thanks, Stephen.
Yeah. Also, it was acknowledged as we, as we were working this through the State Street Executive and technical team, or and Leadership Teams, that the process would be a significant level of effort to do a design of the scope. And that there are many other existing competing priorities within each agency at this time. And so our, the proposed solution was to go after some competitive federal dollars to allow us to increase the capacity of, of the agencies in the region and advance this project without deprioritizing other projects in our region. As this project extent covers multiple jurisdictions, as Commissioner Pickering just mentioned, and other jurisdictions are already planning to pursue competitive grants in, in the corridor, or, excuse me, are planning to pursue competitive federal funds for construction and otherwise this season. It was anticipated that VRT would be the lead applicant for this Raze application. As a lead applicant, however, we would work closely with our partner agencies to ensure that the design project would meet all partner agency standards and needs. The grant application would be for a consultant-delivered, multi-agency design process guided by local and state agency requirements to ensure that adding this to, adding this project would have minimal impact on other priority projects. The grant would include supplemental staff resources such as consultant-provided project manager. And the project would have a clear project team framework, ensuring that all partners are engaged. And that at the end of the process, whether that be ACHD, or ITD, or the City of Boise, or Garden City, they would all be able to evaluate the proposal against their own standards and accept it. And so some of the details of the plan, there's a minimum $5 million planning grant minimum in the Raze program. The deadline for Raze this year is January 30th. We've talked with our funding partners about what the local match requirements would be for a $5 million grant application. And the City of Boise has committed to making that available on the short timeline. As I mentioned previously, we're looking at an extent that would go from 18th out to Old Highway 55. Would include the Glenwood intersection. And we would absolutely be engaging all of the partners, both in the development of the grant application itself. And should we be successful, as I mentioned, having a very clear project team to, to deliver that grant, that consultant-delivered design project.
Hey, Stephen, could you speak to why the section is from 18th to Highway 55? Why is it 18th, not like 23rd or 27th Street?
Yeah, Commissioner Pickering, the, the discussion around why 18th was again, because between 18th and Whitewater, there's a little bit of a gap in terms of kind of a full build-out design there. The, the number, the cross-section varies along that section. And we have a couple of projects, both at 23rd and at 27th, current bus stop improvement projects. And we just would like, the intent was to make sure that we have a full vision of the corridor between 18th and 20, and essentially Whitewater, where the TTOP ended previously. Also, the TTOP ended at Whitewater previously because it was a little bit undetermined how transit would go from State and Whitewater into downtown. And there have been a number of studies that have been conducted since the TTOP in 2011 that, that determined that transit would stay on State Street between Whitewater and downtown Boise. So we would just be looking to have a full build-out design of State Street between 23rd and 18th as well.
But would that be a separate funding and planning area? I guess that's what I'm not, it's not super clear. 18th to 23rd would be a separate planning area? And then this scope would be 23rd to Highway 55, is that correct?
No, the intent would be for this Raze planning grant application to go from 18th to Old Highway 55.
Okay.
That entire section.
Madam President.
Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Yes, Stephen, only question I have so far is 5 million going to be enough? With a lot of the projects that we've, excuse me, seen come to us lately? That could be pretty low.
Yeah, so in terms of kind of next steps, one of the things that we recognize is we don't, we've, we are just at kind of the beginning of, well, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this corridor, but we're at the beginning of like doing a real application for a planning grant this phase. And so there are a lot of details, namely what the cost of, we don't have a cost estimate for that planning project as yet. We are in the process, actually, our solicitation for consultant support ends today, so we should be getting a few our queues together today out off of our on-call list that would help us then build out what the cost estimate would look like, what the scope of that project would look like, including whether or not January 30th is going to be a reasonable deadline. We're, we are pursuing that at the moment and putting everything in place so that we can get there. But to your point, if we get into it and see that there are important questions about scope and costs that we need to consider, we'll bring that back to the project team and.
So this won't be a design program, just the scoping?
No, sorry. The, the grant that we would be pursuing would be for design. I'm saying that right, right now, we're in the process of scoping what would be included in that grant application.
Okay, because with the design included, I mean, we're getting seven-figure low bids just to design a mile of five-lane highway.
So we do not yet, to your point, Commissioner Goldthorpe, we do not yet have a, a, a cost estimate for the, for the application. That's the next step.
This was, I'll just pipe in here, this was brought to the VRT Executive Committee last week as an opportunity that we ought to consider if possible, because we don't know if this program will be renewed or not. And so we, the certainty is that there is a, there's a deadline and a grant due January 30th. We don't know what will come after that. And so we have funds set aside at VRT for this, for the State Street corridor. And I propose that some of those funds that are set aside be used for this match. Because as I've encouraged my staff to do, and my team to do at the City of Boise, I wanted to encourage VRT and all of us to do, to take every opportunity we possibly can to seek to bring more funds home, to get us further along than we would otherwise be. And so saw this as an opportunity that, one, Miranda had suggested that we bring this here to the, to the group to discuss and to, to see what else needed to, to try to make this possible.
Madam President. Commissioner McKinney.
Stephen, just a, just a quick question to clarify from my own understanding. Because in the past, my experience has been these Raze grants, they come with a variety of, well, they're, they're conditioned, they, you know, strings attached, what have you. What, what is it is going to be designed under this grant? So this is a grant for the design of, is it designed for the complete section of the road in this entire extent? Or is it designed for just certain types of facilities? What would, what would be the scope of this design grant?
Thank you, Commissioner Pick, McKinney. The idea would be, the proposal is that we would be going for design of the entire cross-section. So the non-motorized, motorized elements between at least Glenwood and 18th.
So, okay, because, and I think I kind of echo what Commissioner Goldthorpe just said, that that's a, that's a long distance, a $5 million grant plus match to design, what are we talking, several, several miles worth of, of State Street? That seems a bit tall. Anyway, that's, that's why I'm concerned, because I kind of, like, I kind of look at those two things and initially, they don't seem to match up. So in any case, thank you.
I think to Commissioner Goldthorpe and McKinney's points, that I think what would be really helpful with the leadership team that's working on this grant and the scope of the grant and the, and the leadership on, with the mayor and Commissioner Gold, is kind of making sure that the, the application and the intent of that 5 million is going to be complementary to what we've already planned. Because such limited resources, they're not going to, it's not going to be able to do all the things that we want it to do. So if there's, I think, working with our team and leaving it to our staff to figure out, well, this is the part that's the hardest for us to figure out, the other parts we could do internally, those types of things. So as long as I think we've got some idea of why, why you made the decision to go with certain key elements of that design, I think that would be helpful. And I would invite y'all to present back to the commission to explain why you went with key particulars and not obviously a full comprehensive thing, because that's just not realistic with the length of this corridor and the money that you're applying for.
Okay.
Madam President, Mayor, and I'm pleased to see this moving forward, because probably more than any other corridor, there's already been a tremendous amount of planning and design work that's already been done, which is quite unique from other corridors. So I guess the key is how do you put those current designs that we have and the concepts that were incorporated into previous grants, including a significant federal investment that Congressman Simpson got in, into sort of putting all the pieces together. So I would expect the plan, the, the design would take current designs rather than replace them and, and include them, especially with respect to the transit facilities that you're already moving forward with.
Yes.
I just have another question, Madam Mayor, really quick. So Stephen, do you mind, just for making sure everyone's on the same page? Can you define the two different groups that are working on this? So can you define who, at the staff level, is part of that bigger team? And then who is part of the, and forgive me if I'm not using the correct terms that you guys have used to identify yourselves, but like the executive part of the team with the electeds?
Sure, Commissioner Pickering, the, there are three teams that we've used over the years to help advance projects, that VRT has used to help facilitate project advancement along the State Street corridor. And those are Technical Team, which is kind of at a staff level, we would be engaging them as well. But the other two are the Executive Team, and so that's kind of your highest-level staff, folks again. And on the ACHD side, that is manned by Justin. And then on, say, the City of Boise side, Bree's been staffing that. And then there's the Leadership Team, which is when we try and pull in elective representation along the corridor. There wouldn't be all the bodies, but there would be some elected officials from each of the jurisdictions and so on. Commissioner Gold sat in on that as, as well as the mayor from the City of Boise on the State Street Executive Team. And then obviously, from there, we recognize the need to engage the full governing bodies of both, well, of all the jurisdictions. But in this case, the City of Boise and ACHD, which led to meetings like this. And we are, we anticipate coming back to both the City of Boise Council and the ACHD Commission in January before we would finalize any grant application.
Thanks, Stephen. And then can you describe what the role or scope of decision-making would be at the technical, executive, and leadership levels?
Yeah, so at the executive level, we would be looking to finalize, well, so at the technical level, we would be developing and proposing, say, the, the scope elements for the grant application. We would then get approval through the Executive Team on, on those elements. Beyond that, we probably would come back to, given the timeframe, we likely would come back to maybe the full commission and councils for their review of the grant application and its elements. Does that make sense?
Yeah, maybe, Madam Mayor, Commissioner Gold, could you describe just some of the things that you all talked about at your meeting with VRT and staff? And just some, some of the decisions or kinds of things that you guys are talking about at that level, if you're here to share?
Sure, we.
Oh, my.
We talked much more generally, rather than specifics, about the opportunity that this grant provided, the need for, to advance planning in, along this corridor so that in the event in the future, there's another opportunity for large-scale investments, like we saw the last four years, that we would actually be ready for that. This, I mean, this process seems very similar to the last Raze grant that we did together. That included, at the, at the city's urging, VRT said yes, include ITD, ACHD, VRT, the city. I believe we might have provided the match for that too, I can't remember, for the $12 million.
Yeah, there was, we worked with each agency and, and everybody chipped in what they could.
Yeah, okay. And, but it was the technical team that spent the bulk of time on preparing that grant, grant, then checking in with their leadership structures at different agencies.
And pardon me for my question, I think it was, why I mean to ask is there's a lot of really important nuances with this corridor. And, you know, either way, having, assuming we get the funding, assuming we don't get the funding, either way, we're going to have to come up with and develop and understand kind of those details and the various roles that each of us play. And so I think having, you know, clear, defined roles within each of these groups helps the rest of us who are not part of those meetings understand, well, what, when should it come to the commission? When should it come to the City Council? And what is our role in supporting what the executive team has decided, right, or green-lighted in that scope? And that helps us move faster in either pursuing additional funds or hey, there's this challenge that we all need to work on together. So that's just a flag for staff in general, that we make sure that we're all on the same page. And that's one easy way to get kind of tripped up. But Commissioner Gold?
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. And maybe Stephen can also speak to the meeting, meeting frequencies of each of these groups. And I'll just, an example, but my memory is that, you know, we talked about 23rd being the eastern boundary, that that was the consensus during the leadership meeting. And it sounds like there were maybe additional conversations, that I think there was an executive meeting afterwards. So I agree with Commissioner Pickering's point about kind of needing to define those, you know, parameters of each of those groups and when they report back to the different bodies.
Yeah, Commissioner Gold and Pickering, the, I think the, right now, the main issues that we're addressing are trying to define what the extent of the, of the corridor would be, kind of why we're going for those extents. And then related would be, once we know what the cost estimates are going to be, figuring out if there are things like, if we're trying to make it fit within a box, like how do we, how do we do that? And so I'm thinking that those would be the types of decisions that the Executive and Leadership Team would be taking up. January 30th is not very far away. And so what we, we were anticipating having two or three meetings with those groups before then, and then a, coming to a commission meeting in January. We also do want to note that we did not want to close the door on this Raze cycle. But one of the things that we scoped with our consultant RFQ was for them to provide us some honest feedback as to the readiness of, of this grant application for this cycle. And if we need to push it out, we're prepared to, to do that. But I think the main things that, that we see as needing to get sorted out would be, again, kind of the extent of the corridor. And then how, how this process would impact any other projects that are going on along the corridor, both in terms of priority and funding, but also scope. And so if there's opportunities for us to build on projects that are already in, in the works, like, that's the kind of input we're looking for from the Executive and, and Technical Teams.
Madam Mayor.
So I guess, you know, just to, I think, share where I'm at, we've invested a lot of time and money and energy into this corridor already, all the different groups have. I think that we know that this is an extremely important corridor and one of our top priorities. It's been one of our top priorities for many years. I think that there's grant funding that's potentially available right now, that if we don't pursue it sooner than later, some of that grant funding goes away. So I think it makes sense to pursue it. I do think that there needs to be some alignment between the City of Boise, ACHD, VRT, and is 18th Street the street? Is it further down as far as how we scope? So I guess I would direct, my opinion would be is that we would move forward with a grant application, but we make sure that we're clear on, in agreement on where that starts. And I guess the other thing that I would say is that I think there should be awareness from all the different agencies, City of Boise, Garden City, ACHD specifically, that this may not be enough funding, but it may get us a long way, and we may need to be exploring other funding in the future when we find out exactly how much it's going to cost. But I don't think that that means that we shouldn't pursue this opportunity right now.
Well, and thanks, Councilmember Halliburton. I just want to add in tremendous gratitude for the City of Boise and your leadership mayor on committing the match. That's a huge lift and looking forward to how we can be supportive partners and, and other aspects, right, to make sure that it's a meaningful partnership. So just want to flag that, that's huge. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
That was it.
All right. Bree is going to take the next item. Bree, I'm hoping that you could shave five minutes off your presentation.
No problem. I don't think anyone wants to hear my lost voice for that long anyway. Thank you, councilmembers and commissioners for having me. My name is Bree Brush, waiting for my slides to appear.
Did you get all these movies? Looks like those new TV shows.
Yeah.
Do you have somebody joining them?
Maybe Amanda? I was willing them to be there. Okay. This is a follow-up to a discussion that this group had in June of this year regarding our zoning code and ACHD policy. This is a follow-up to a discussion that this group had in June of this year regarding our zoning code and ACHD policy. You asked staff to review these guiding documents for redundancies and potential inconsistencies. So we've done some of that work today. And then we've identified some, some future items that could come up at future meetings as well. So I'll start with a little overview of our new zoning code process. There's a lot on the screen here, but essentially, the planning team will work at the outset with an applicant to type the project and determine what path it's going to go on, the level of involvement it will require from the neighborhood, and then ultimately, what commission and hearing body it will end up with. This is where the Ada County Highway District comes in. A member of the ACHD Development Services Team is invited to participate in the interdepartmental review, which happens after a neighborhood meeting, depending on the type of project that it is. And this is really where, at least in the last 10 or 11 months, we've been able to catch some early inconsistencies in our respective conditions and staff reports. Here is an overview of the applications received this year compared to last year. The blue is the previous fiscal year and the orange is this fiscal year. And what administrative body they're ultimately reviewed by, seeing a little bit more at the administrative level, less at the City Council level, and then a few at the new hearing examiner level. That's the direct implication of the new zoning code. Both ACHD and City of Boise policy documents provide applicants' direction on sidewalks, supporting easements, placement of landscaping. Most of the items that impact the look and feel of the pedestrian realm, both of our agencies will have policies for. So today, kind of the most prevalent we'll focus on is sidewalks. This is what our new zoning code has to say about sidewalks. Two different sections, depending on the district and the zone. But generally, we're looking at a minimum five-foot detached with a minimum of eight-foot buffer, no matter the street typology that's adjacent to it. Applicants may pursue a waiver in highly unusual circumstances for local streets or a variance if there is some other type of really unique situation on a collector or arterial. But generally, we're looking at that minimum five-foot with detached condition. And then in the ACHD policy manual, it's based on road classification, which you all know because you see these all the time. Policy will direct applicants based on their classification with at least a five-foot sidewalk, but detached or attached, depending on whether it's a local street, a collector, or an arterial. ACHD policy will advise applicants that the lead land use agency policies may require wider sidewalks. And if that situation is apparent, ACHD staff might also note it in the staff report. I have the whole policies list out here and you don't have to read those. But essentially, one of the biggest differentiators, which can be an early inconsistency that we catch with the IDR meetings, is whether it's going to be attached or detached and what the condition of the surrounding sidewalk network is, which I think is one of the main reasons why you all wanted to hear about this today. And then the other items we identified, which we can explore in the future or we can take questions on now, are sort of the differences between our two policies on public versus private streets. We talked about the State Street redevelopment and right-of-way acquisition. One of the reasons why that grant is so important, in particular for land use, is being able to determine, as projects come through for redevelopment, where those setbacks are, where the multi-use pass is placed. And a lot of that will depend on the street section. So that's one of the reasons why the City of Boise is also very motivated to support that grant from a land use perspective. A couple of the other items that come up to are pavement preservation and funding that you can utilize for that from federal funds versus what our zoning requirements might require on a road section, which could indicate how much right-of-way impacts you would have. Those aren't always compatible. And then same, there's a lot of opportunity in the long run strategy for master street map and right-of-way preservation. If we're seeing some streets on the master street map going to seven lanes, is that accurate? Are we preserving for that? Or would we like to go a different direction, items like that? But those are the main things we wanted to daylight for you today. And we'll take direction on any more you want us to look into beyond the sidewalks.
Thank, thank you, Bree. Just to kind of, I really appreciate you presenting and listing out concretely the differences between our two different requirements. And I've heard from at least a handful of constituents, at least in my district, about being caught in kind of the city's asking this, but ACHD's asking this, but they're different. How do we reconcile that? And so I think it's really helpful that we're having this conversation now and trying to figure out how we can have alignment within your guys' jurisdiction on those sidewalk treatments. So really looking forward to kind of parsing out specifics, making sure that staff know on your side and our side, who we need to, who has like the higher authority there? And then making sure that we're acquiescing to that as well. So, and then also the development knows who to contact. I think that's what I've also been hearing, is just kind of being stuck and not knowing where to turn after the folks that are reviewing that application kind of say their piece. So having like a clear pathway would also be helpful. But that was a really beautiful image in the beginning. So I'm wondering, just flagging that for our staff too, if that would be something good to also create for us? And then making sure that there's an element, right, where it's, this is us, this is where it goes to the city. I think that would be really helpful.
Madam Mayor, Madam President, I don't know that this comment's going to help with making things easy for consistency. But one of the things that the city will be doing here soon is we'll be taking a look at our modern zoning code and we'll be getting input from different stakeholders, trying to figure out what's working, trying to figure out where there may need to be some improvements. When it comes to sidewalks specifically, I think that that's one of the areas that we're going to hear quite a bit of feedback, especially, I think, from the development community, different advocates for trees, even, I think, our pedestrian and bicycle advocates about the pursuit of consistency versus having some flexibility in the process. And I know that flexibility makes things sometimes difficult with government, especially when you've got different agencies working together. But like an example would be, we've had a five-foot detached sidewalk or a five-foot separated detached sidewalk on applications before, that we're going to tear down a major tree. And so we're having to figure out, do we tear down the tree? Do we not do detached sidewalks? Do we do attached sidewalks for the entire stretch? And to me, there's got to be this sort of middle ground between consistency and flexibility, where we get what the community wants and we get what the community needs, without necessarily trying to make everything perfect. And so making a sidewalk slightly closer to the street and slightly narrower so we don't have to tear down a historic tree, meeting a developer where they're at as far as some barriers that they may face in making things a little bit narrower or not quite exactly what we've got with plan. I think that's something that's going to be important for us to consider. If we want the desired development, the desired sidewalks, the desired experience for the users, it's not always going to be this exact width. It's not always going to be exactly this much separated. Maybe it goes back to attached for a small section. You know, we've done that throughout the years, all over the place. And you can walk around the north end and you can see sidewalks that get narrower and wider to go around a tree or a different type of, you know, abnormal construction or design on the sidewalk. And so as we are trying to find this consistency, I guess my ask for both City of Boise staff and ACHD staff is that we try to figure out where the flexibility is with that as well. And I know that that makes the whole application process a little muckier and murkier. We do have variance processes to go through these things. I think I'm hoping that there's the ability to do a little bit more than that, to get the development, the experience that we need. And I would say that the same thing goes when we're talking about, you know, the width of bike lanes. You know, we have the width that we always want to see, but there may be sections where the road gets a little bit narrower. And instead of it being a five-foot bike lane, maybe it needs to be four feet or three and a half feet for a small section, instead of just throwing out a bike lane in general. And so within our guidelines, that's kind of what I'm looking at, is for a conversation where we can talk about how can we build flexibility into these plans? If people need clarification on that, I can try to explain better. I don't know how well I articulated that.
Any other feedback? Commissioner Hanson?
Yeah, I just want to weigh in and agree with Councilmember Halliburton. There's been enough cases where the context-sensitive neighborhood context has kind of been lost as the desire for, to apply certain policies. I'm looking at Holly Lane is a great example of one, where we almost just sort of plowed through and had an attached sidewalk and eliminated some, some potential tree canopy. Flexibility is critical because, of course, once the infrastructure's in, it's in there permanently. The other is that you mentioned that the notion of updating the master street map, which is a planning document, but historically, there's been long gaps between updating the map. And yet, there's been more frequent changes or improvements in this, what the city needs. And so I think ACHD is now at a point where we are capable of updating the master street map much more frequently to make it consistent so that the next development, the next request, isn't lost because we haven't updated the master street map yet. And it's been quite a while since the last Boise city requests for updating the master street map have come before the Commission. And so I would really strongly encourage to constantly update the master street map because that's the planning document we have to fall back on. So do that much more frequently than what's been done in the past.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If anything, over the last few months in preparing for this presentation, we've seen comments and staff reports that are underscoring and highlighting City of Boise desires from our zoning code. So really a testament to your staff and kind of paying attention to what our new zoning code entails and specifically calling out in certain instances, the City of Boise's requirements for detached versus attached. So that's why we don't have as much to talk about today on the sidewalks, but happy to follow up with more on the master street map and flexibility.
Thanks, Bree. Thanks, Mayor. So the last item we have is the winter operations overview. Welcome, Tom Adi.
I will also wait patiently for my presentation to appear. There's me. Good evening, Madam President, Madam Mayor, members of the Council and the Commission. For the record, Tom Adi, Deputy Director, Operations, ACHD. I'm going to discuss winter operations with you today. There is no sound. It's a...
It feels good, yeah.
Really rocking music right now.
It sounds like snow, right?
It's exciting. It gets you in the winter operations.
I just, while that's playing though, I do want to flag and highlight how appreciative I was that several of the Council and the Mayor joined us on our cruise last winter, this last winter event. So the invite still stands if you want to see it from a snowplow in our operations and how great our team is and the way we kind of prioritize the various different roadways.
Oh, it's too bad Councilmember Morales is not here because he dressed up as that snowplow flower for Christmas.
I loved it, yeah.
So I hope everyone enjoyed that very quiet video. I wanted to have a throwback to the 1920s. During winter operations, the mission of ACHD is to facilitate the safest possible travel conditions for the public that are utilizing, by utilizing, all available tools and resources that we have. We have a pretty, I'll say, robust fleet of, we have, we have equipment deployed at two different sites, but altogether, we have 73 units with 50 total plows. 176 team members are a part of our snow, our winter maintenance, excuse me, I almost said snow. And we also have contractors on call in the event, like we have last year, where there's a whole bunch of snow that happens in a very short period of time and we need to get it off the roads. As far as material that we use to get that off the road, we have our magnesium chloride, which is our freeze preventer. That's what we put on before it gets frozen so that the roads don't ice up. Our sand salt mix, which breaks that bond and we are able to get some of the snow and ice to de-bond and make it easier to push off with plows, and then just our rock salt as well, which helps in that same de-bonding process. When it comes to what we do when we're doing our plowing, priority one is our arterials, collectors, major intersections, overpasses, bridges, hospitals, fire stations, railroad crossings, school crossings, all the things that are vital to people getting where they need to go. It may not include everything you might like, but it's as much as we can do, including streets with a grade over 6%. Once we get that covered, our priority two is our school bus routes that are identified with our relationships with the school districts around us. And then our third priority would be residential streets, including cul-de-sacs. And this is when we can get everything else done. We can pop into those neighborhoods and start working on them. But arterials are definitely going to be our number one priority. We do quite a bit of outreach when it comes to winter operations. We have our neighborhoods in the know. That was just a couple of weeks ago, where we bring in different neighborhood associations, go over this presentation with them and just explain to them, what are our priorities? And how do we keep the roads free and clean to go? Then we also communicate with businesses through flyers, direct emails, and reminders to different chambers of commerce about how winter operations are going to work. And then the last piece would be our relationship with the media around us. We, we talk to the media, we have press releases, we offer ride-alongs. We had, one news station was out at our Winter Ops Trail, which we'll go over a little bit later on in this presentation. But we give them as much access and information as possible so that they can transmit that to the commuting public. As far as communication to the just general public, we have a bunch of digital media that we use. We have a phenomenal communications team, I would be willing to say the best in the nation, at keeping the public engaged and in the know of what we do. In addition, included in that, we have our Name a Plow event, which is how we got Ashton Gentey. And they've, they've been able to just drive a ton of traffic to that and get people aware of what we do. New this year will actually be our ACHD-ITD joint map, which will show you which entity is responsible for which roads, which I think will help eliminate a little bit of that confusion that people are having. And then we've got the Fill the Plow, Fill the Plow event is our food drive that we have in competition with ITD.
Tom, before you move on, I just want to flag for the Council that I'm sure in your own jurisdictions, you get a lot of questions about Broadway or Chenden or Eagle. Those are state facilities. And I think, you know, when we have a snow event, it really helps when we have multiple messengers amplifying, hey, yes, this is an issue like we saw this last winter. Broadway was particularly challenging for a long time and we actually had to go in and actually help ITD. So just kind of be mindful of, oh yeah, that's the state facility, these are ACHD ones. And kind of helping usher in the right support if it's not an ACHD facility. I think hearing from all of you, knowing that's not ACHD is kind of helpful and clearing up that communication challenge in the winter event.
My finishing up was I will stand for any questions, or sit, I guess.
Yes, it. I think, Tom, do you mind just sharing a quick wrap-up of the summer operations and chip seal and things like that?
Absolutely. So this summer, we had a chip seal plan of 439 lane miles. We were able to complete 300 of those lane miles, well, overcoming 18 days of excessive heat and an additional seven of bad air. So we got as much done as I think we could and I thought it was a very successful season overall.
We're happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
I'll just point out in that, yes, you had a successful season, but I think I would expect that it's becoming a trend, that you're having more hot excessive heat days that you're having to pull back on operations. Is that, are you seeing that over time, that there's more?
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Mayor. I haven't actually tracked it. I can get back to you with that information, but I can't tell you with certainty.
Oh, no, no need to get back. I mean, what I think is important here though, is when we think about that window for our residents, the window that you have for the chip ceiling, and that that's 25 days this summer. And the summer period's not all that long, where you're trying to get this work done in 25 days that you had to pull out of the field because of health concerns. And so I would imagine that, at least we're experiencing it, City of Boise, we're all seeing it, so many more hotter days than in the past, that curious about how you mitigate for that in the long run to be sure to be able to, and to catch up on that maintenance that's lost.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan, do you mind speaking to that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're, you're absolutely correct. We have seen that trend occurring over the last number of years. This last year was definitely worse than we've seen in a long time and we would hope it doesn't keep getting worse. But we are looking very closely at our preventative maintenance strategies over this next year to see what is the best way we can do this and to ensure that the roads stay in great condition and while recognizing the realities that we do face as time changes. This year was, you know, it, it also does make it a little bit more challenging when we're in areas with a lot of on-street parking and a lot of things to work around. But the, the team definitely did well for, with those impacts. If you assume 25 days of impact, that's about a third of our, of our time, but they still were able to complete 75%. So they, they exceeded the abilities of, of the time, but... So they exceeded the abilities of the time, but it definitely was a major impact this year.
And I want to just add, outside of chip sealing, I mean, that impacts our construction window, right? We have a very short construction season because of the weather. And this impacts chip seal, but it also impacts our contractors as well and all the folks that need to get in the roadway, even utilities, I'm assuming, right? And those types of things. So I think as we've talked about and seen the impacts of road construction in small, confined spaces, in a very small window, just keeps getting compounded by the seasons and hotness and bad air quality. So just kind of flagging that, as we all know, coordination's going to be more important than ever to make sure that those impacts are the least of, the least that they could possibly be. And I think you guys have seen this and mentioned this in the past, just the impact, although it's probably small, but it is meaningful and it's worth mentioning. You know, tree canopy, you know, can preserve our pavement quality and other elements, right? And so whether that's, you know, detached sidewalks with a tree element, all of those things kind of, you know, pieced together and helping build a more resilient road infrastructure. Obviously, there's different trade-offs with each of those different designs, but that plays a role in helping us kind of carry out our road condition a little bit longer. Mr. Goldthorpe?
Yes, I'm just going to try and make up for an omission from the very first time that Tom gave a presentation to us at the commission. I omitted something that is a tradition, and so I'll make up for that now.
Madam President, thank you, Commissioner Goldthorpe.
Any other questions, Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor, Madam President.
I'm just wondering if you guys have made bets on when you'll be out in the streets plowing first?
Not so far.
Yeah, if I could, just a couple of things. One, I think I want to voice gratitude for the work that gets done when all of a sudden it just starts snowing and snowing and snowing and snowing. Some of these like major storms that we've had the last couple of years, they do seem different than some of the ones in the past where it's just all of a sudden it's there and it, we didn't think we were going to get what we got. And so I want to thank you for all the effort that has gone into that. I also want to make sure that we acknowledge the city's coordination in that effort as well, whether that's the Boise Green Belt and making sure that we're clearing that and getting out the word to all of our neighbors and our residents and the responsibility of clearing out the sidewalks. And that's sort of like a twofold thing. One is that like go out there and clear your sidewalks. And two, also acknowledging that you might have a next door neighbor who has a hard time clearing their sidewalks. And so doing what we can to be good neighbors to each other and helping each other out, you know, wherever we live in town. There is something I think that we ran into the last couple of years, and that I think is a couple of neighborhoods, specifically over in the River Street area, where our Parks and Rec team has had to jump in and do some help with sidewalk clearing. A lot of vulnerable community members, a lot of folks who don't necessarily have the ability to clear off those sidewalks. And so I hope that in this communication, that our Parks and Rec team and the City of Boise can be working with you to make sure that we're doing what we can in some of these more vulnerable neighborhoods to clear, clear what we can when we know that there's some folks who may not have the ability to do that. And then the last thing, and this is probably more of a question, I know one of the things that I've gotten some emails about, both in sort of the Centennial High School area and a lot of our neighborhoods around downtown, is that when there are these huge snowstorms and we do plow, a lot of times that snow gets piled up sort of close to the crosswalk area or close to a sidewalk where it becomes very difficult for a neighbor, once it's plowed over there to shovel it. And so we've ran into some issues, I think with kids walking to school, people who are still walking to work, who may not have a car in those sort of crosswalk areas. And so I'm hoping that that's something that we can look into this year as well, making sure that when we're plowing and we're clearing, that we're not making it even more difficult for a neighbor or neighborhood to clear that sidewalk in the area and trying to figure out how they actually get into the crosswalk. So I don't know if that's something that you've gotten, if people have reached out about as well, and if there's any ideas or plans or things that you've been able to do to address that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam President. Councilman Halliburton, I'm going to make sure I get all the names right. We are certainly cognizant of people needing to use crosswalks and other modes of transportation to get there. What we can do, the best of our abilities to get the snow off the road. And if we can continue and not make a stop or not change the plow angle when we're near an intersection or to that extent, that's something we can certainly, we'll certainly look to do. We don't, we don't want to block crosswalks, we don't want to block sidewalks. But our major concern is getting the roads clear and then coming back through and seeing what we can do once that occurs.
Jimmy, if I respond, so a couple of times, we've, you know, heard specifically like down at like 16th and Front, other areas where that we were alerted that there was a big chunk of snow that was blocking folks that needed to cross. So we've partnered with you all multiple times to clear that. And I think there's been other instances where that plow route has created challenges for folks in the neighborhood. And so we flagged that internally and so staff have worked with those operators to come up with a different route, right? To remove that snow in a different way. So I think if there is a persistent challenge, make sure to share that with the commissioner and staff and we can revisit that so that folks know going into the season that we need to plan ahead, plan ahead of that.
Wonderful. And if I could just follow up there, is there a way for people to report if they've got a sidewalk or a crosswalk that's blocked either to ACHD to let them know that there's potentially an issue? You know, kid getting to school, someone getting to work, something along those lines where they can't actually access the crosswalk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam President. Councilman Halliburton, yes, there's a couple of different ways. There's our tele system, which is online. They can put one in there or they can call our main office and that'll get disseminated down to our operations team.
Great, thank you. I expect that we're going to have another big storm or two this coming year. It's unpredictable that we get way more snow than we thought we were going to. And so I hope that the City of Boise can be as good of a partner as we can, knowing that in some cases, it's all hands on deck. And our Parks and Rec team has done such a great job of doing that the last few years. And so I hope that we can continue. Where are we looking for?
It's snowing.
Oh, it's snowing right now. Today's the day. Parks and Rec, go get your golf carts, put the shovel on. No, I hope that we can continue to be working together as we, as we make sure that we've got all hands on deck to get everybody where they need to go, no matter what type of vehicle they're using. So thank you.
Commissioner Goldthorpe?
Yes, along those lines, we just had a short discussion here a week or so ago about the, a particular program that ACHD has been really good at doing the last few years, especially during and since Snowmageddon, having to do with folks that are chronically ill, who have special medical conditions. And having our plow teams take extra special care of their, their driveways and things that would make their lives easier. And we used to have a list provided to us by the county and that was withdrawn this year. So I'm hoping that we have a better relationship with the City of Boise so that we can provide those citizens who really need us, you know, whether they have to call for an ambulance or a fire truck or something like that. My opinion is that we need to cater to them somehow as we have in the past. Just throwing that out.
We're at time, is it really brief?
Yeah, can I just be, just briefly, it struck me, you know, Boise's had this Rake Boise program for a long, long time. It's been very successful. It's looked for, you know, essentially organizing volunteers to help people in need. And every year, as soon as we get a major snowstorm, we have individuals who have special, you know, mobility issues that come into the ACHD commission and talk about those challenges. And every time they do, you know, they're asking for, you know, agency support to do something or other. But my first question is, well, do you have neighbors? Because the truth is neighbors can always do things that for a governmental organization to do in a formal way, they can do it much more quickly, much more easily. And I wonder if we could perhaps have some sort of a valley wide push to, you know, have people prepare to, you know, help out your neighbors. Because the truth is, when something like Snowmageddon hits, there's no amount of public resources that can handle something like that. But the reality is when neighbors just on their own band together, that can go much further.
Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President, Madam Mayor. Commissioner McKenna, you are on top of things and your staff is already looking at that. We are looking at a potential program similar to a rake up Boise where we provide certain resources and materials and, and then people are organized to help take care of those, in those situations. It's a little bit less predictable than leaves falling every single year, but we do, we are looking at this already. The other thing I would just mention is we do ensure that our inspectors who have different roles, but when it snows, it slows things down just a little bit on the inspection side, that they also are armed to be able to deploy and help with some of those situations. So we do, we appreciate that, that feedback and the partnership with the city.
Well, with that, our meeting is adjourned on our side.
I'll take a motion on our side.
Madam Mayor, do we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned too. Thanks, everybody, very, very much.
Thank you.